I have a motion to go back to public session.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for February 8, 2021. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for our armed forces and those in our community who have lost loved ones, especially the mother of Mary Lou McIntosh and the grandmother of Felicia Eugene. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Good evening, everybody. Again, we apologize for our technical difficulties. Sometimes it happens. I'm going to ask for a point of order. Can we please bring the superintendent's report for the continued reopening planning up to the first part of the agenda, and then we'll have public comment after that. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
All right, Ron, would I turn it over to you?
Sure. Thank you so much, Jackie. And to our community, I am so sorry about the technical issues that we had. We had begun the meeting. We thought that we had started the meeting. There was an issue with the link for whatever reason. And here we are. We sent out a Connect Ed blast. So I hope that, just given all the avenues of communication between the website, the Connect Ed blast, I'm sure social media assisted in communicating the delay in the start. We apologize for that, and we'll begin. So I wanted to provide the board with another update. At each of our Board of Education meetings, I provide an update on our reopening and where we are in the process, and it is an ongoing process. It will continue to be an ongoing process. I'll begin by just starting with our ongoing goal. As always, to get our students back to in-person instruction to the greatest extent possible. That's the goal. That hasn't changed, nor will that change. I will assure you, and I will assure anyone on this call, that no one wants the children back more than I do. I say that not just as superintendent, but I say that as a father of two children who go to school here in the hybrid model. On so many levels, do I want all of our students back in school? And I want them back in school five days a week. So with that said, I want to share some developments that have happened since the last time that we met. First, COVID positivity rates continue to decline in the town and in the region, not just the town, but in the region by and large, and in the state. And Yorktown was disproportionately hit hard in Westchester with regard to COVID. When you look at our overall population numbers and you look at the number of positive cases within our town, and I think anyone who was reading the emails that I have been sending out, and there's another school district in Yorktown as well that sends out emails, those are all in the same town, that Yorktown has been hit disproportionately hard with COVID. We're seeing the numbers come down, and that's really encouraging. The availability of the vaccine is another really encouraging development. We certainly understand how difficult it is to access the vaccine, but it is becoming more available and more widespread, and that's encouraging. We completed our survey on January 8th. You'll recall that I sent out a survey to our school community to better understand plans for the instructional models for individual students for the second semester of the school year, the second half of the school year. The survey concluded on the 25th of January, and the first second semester started on February 1st. That was such an important survey for us because it enabled us to just better understand what we could do and what we couldn't do. Could we return additional students? To what extent could we return additional students to school? So that was a very important survey. I appreciate those who participated in it. The Department of Health guidelines on quarantines have actually also been helpful to us. There was a time that I remember, not that long ago, just a couple of months ago, where it felt like we had one school building learning remotely every day of the week. There was a different school that was going remote because of the number of cases that we had. And that was a function of not being able to staff our schools. I do believe our schools are safe. I absolutely stand behind that. I think our schools are safe. I think we have taken health and safety protocols that are second to none. And we want our employees to be safe, our faculty and staff, absolutely. We want to be safe. We want our students to be safe. You're entrusting your children to us, and that's a responsibility that we don't take lightly. I entrust my own children to the school district. We want to make sure our schools are safe, and we know that they are. With regard to the Department of Health quarantines, the benefit to the district is that the changes that were implemented or that were first initiated on January 3rd, Dr. Corsaro reviewed those for us, and by January 11th, when we were back in session, we had applied those new quarantine orders, resulted in fewer faculty and staff members being quarantined. We didn't see many quarantines during the week of the 11th because we had been remote prior to that, but certainly in the second half of January, and here we are in the first half of February, we're seeing the impact of that change in Department of Health policy, and that's resulted in fewer staff, so being quarantined. So what we were doing is we were borrowing from one school to fill in at other schools, just to keep our school buildings open during that time. That was a very, very real situation that we were in. Many people would get our emails at 7:00, 8:00, 9:00, 10:00 o'clock at night, but the work didn't end there. The work just started there. Then the next plan was, okay, we need to come up with a coverage plan and a staffing plan to make sure that our students have a safe environment the following day. And we've done that for months on end, and we continue to do that at times. Space remains a limiting factor. That hasn't changed. That's the one constant in this equation. And weather becomes nicer. That gives us some options to take our students outdoors for a time of the day, certainly not for the full day, but good weather helps. With all of these factors, more availability of staff, and looking at the way we can use space and cold, better weather's coming. I'm going to be recommending this evening to the board that we begin returning all kindergarten students to in-person learning five days per week. So I'd like to start there and return all of our kindergarten students. We've been working on this for a number of weeks. The question was, can we make it happen? It's not a matter of let's get creative and think outside of the box. That is, that is just such a misrepresentation of the reality of what we're dealing with. When we had Dr. Saversky conduct the capacity study in our buildings, we determined that our building utilization rate was at 90%. Dr. Saversky came to a board meeting in June, presented the study to the board, and that was at the time that we were planning for some of the developments. I'll get to the developments a little later on in my presentation. But we know that our buildings are highly used. We're short on space. It takes time to add space, to add space that is student-ready space and usable space for instruction. At this time, we have been able to come up with a plan that will allow us to bring all of our kindergarten students back at Brookside and Mohansick in-person learning five days per week. A more detailed timeline will be shared after the February recess. So there are questions that need to be answered. We don't have all of the answers right now. We're working through those answers. But we will, at some point next month, later in the month, we will be returning our kindergarteners. Just a point of clarification, there were some concerns that I've heard, some concerns about the remote model, the fully remote model. I want you to understand that the fully remote model is not going anywhere for this school year. I don't anticipate the state telling us that we must disband the model this year. I don't know if it will be offered in September. Those are unanswered questions that we have with the State Education Department. The State Department will make those determinations. For the remainder of this school year, I do not see the fully remote model going away K-12. So I just want to be very clear on that. The hybrid model in kindergarten only, if we're bringing all the children back to in-person learning, there will not be a hybrid model. So at the kindergarten level, the decisions will be, do we come to school in person each day, or do we go remote, fully remote? So the fully remote model is not going anywhere at this time. The kindergarten students, we're looking forward to welcoming them back. Why did we start with kindergarten? Well, kindergarteners need our support. They all need our support, every one of our students. We have 3,440 students in this district. Every one of them needs their school district. And we're absolutely looking to bring back additional students. I'll announce some additional students that we're bringing back momentarily. Our kindergarteners need the support of the teacher a little more directly than students in the upper grades. Yes, other grades need the support of their students and their teachers, and we're looking at that too. But I think it makes sense logically. Our kindergarteners lost good portion, about 12 weeks of their preschool year, and now they have had limited in-person instruction during their kindergarten year, their first year into our district. So we will be welcoming additional kindergarten students back. Please look for more information after the February recess. There will be a survey, and there'll be some more information that will be shared. We will also, so I think I clarified the hybrid model. I think I clarified the fully remote model for kindergarten. The hybrid model won't be available once we return all of our kindergarten students. The, and I'll come back to the six-foot rule because I know that's a question that's on the minds naturally of people. The additional students, we are also returning all students in our special education program, K-12. We're going to be phasing in the return of students in our special education program. Students who have IEP in hand will have the option of returning five days per week. We've already begun that re-entry at the high school level, where we have a higher percentage of students who are learning remotely. At the elementary school level, we have the least flexibility because we have 83% of our students learning in the hybrid model. Only 17% of our students are learning fully remotely. At the high school level, we have 55% of our students learning in person with 45% of our students learning remotely, and that provided us with greater flexibility to return additional students sooner. So we have begun the phase in. We were pleased to welcome back some of our ninth grade students to in-person learning five days per week, and we'll continue to share that information with our school community. So again, we're working through the details. We will be sending more information after the February recess. But at this point, our kindergarten students, all special education students in the district will be returning. We're looking at our entering and emerging English language learners as well throughout the district, and we're working through plans to return students who were just learning the language. That's something that we're also working through. And now the remaining questions are, well, what about grades 1 through 12? Well, as of right now, with the six-foot rule still in place, and I do want to speak to that because there's a lot of misinformation being circulated. I was really encouraged to hear the governor make the comment about a full in-person return to learning. We want the students here. We're here. Our teachers are here, and they're working so hard, day in and day out. Our clinicians are here every day, working for our students. Our administrators are here. Our nurses are here. Our custodians are here. Our clerical staff, we're all here. We want our kids here. There's a lot of confusion surrounding the distancing in schools. We comply with Department of Health guidelines. When the Department of Health told us, in order to reopen your schools, you have to do X, Y, and Z, we did all of those, and we went beyond. When we were told quarantine rules are going to be 14 days, and if someone on a bus is seated at the front and they test positive, well, then somebody 35 feet away from them at the rear of the bus must be quarantined as well. We followed that guideline. Department of Health are the experts here, and we're deferring to them. That might not be the most popular stance. That's the only stance that I think you'd want me to take, leading our schools, is to follow what the experts are saying in their fields. And the Department of Health has told us that, well, now we're going to change the quarantine rules based on what we've learned throughout this pandemic. We believe that most disease occurs within the first 10 days. Okay, so the Department of Health lowered the quarantine rules to 10 days, and we accepted that. They no longer require us to quarantine a full bus, which is why you're noticing that not all buses are being quarantined. And I called the Department of Health when they first wanted us to quarantine people at the front of the bus to the back of the bus, and I said, we have video footage on our buses. I can confirm with video evidence who was near the student or who was near the individual who was positive. And that didn't work. At this point, they've amended their policies, and we do use our video evidence to help us with who was sitting where. It's not a perfect science, but it's certainly a helpful resource. The Department of Health has made some changes with regard to high-risk sports, and they have now authorized high-risk sports to commence. Tonight, I'll be recommending to the board that we allow high-risk sports to continue. We can do this safely. Now, I've been receiving a couple of questions about the inconsistency in that message. And our district cannot be any more consistent. We follow Department of Health guidelines. As the Department of Health learns more, they modify their guidelines. We adapt to follow the guidelines. So as the Department of Health made a change to their quarantine rules, we adopted those changes. As they made changes to allow sports to happen, we're going to adopt those changes. And once they relax their stance on six feet to three feet, or two feet or four feet, I'm not quite sure where the three feet came from. Yes, I've read the AAP studies. I've read the study out of Harvard. Once the DOH or any other agency that regulates schools in New York, New York State DOH, State Education Department, Governor's Office, or the local DOH, modify their stance on the distance between desks. Now, they might argue that it's very clear, that it's right there, barriers or six feet. That's not true. Because I have reached out to each of these agencies, and the response that I have received is six feet is a non-negotiable. I've reached out to our attorneys for clarification on the guidelines. Six feet is non-negotiable. Reached out to the Deputy Director of the New York State School Boards Association, and the six feet's not negotiable. Reached out to our insurance company, and they said, short of any directive from a state agency that regulates you, six feet is not negotiable. So I will be speaking with county officials. I'll be speaking with state officials to talk about this distancing. I fully anticipate that as the vaccine becomes more widespread, there will be a relaxing of the distancing requirements. But as of right now, it is six feet. I saw the article in the Lo-Hud newspaper today, and the, just the part that I disagreed with is the contradiction that the State DOH makes about how clear the guidance is. Because if it was so clear, I don't know if we would all be on different pages. And we're not all on different pages. The reality is of the 43 school districts in Westchester County, the vast majority, I believe over 40 of them, are adhering to the six-feet space. So I share that with you, and I give you all of that information in full transparency. We want our students back. We're going to take a step in the right direction. And we're going to welcome all of our kindergarten students back. We're going to bring in all of our special education students. I'm going to bring in our entering and emerging ENL students, our English language learners. And I'm going to recommend high-risk sports continue because our students need this. Our students absolutely need this. If somebody were to ask me what keeps me up at night and what worries me, it's the social and emotional wellness of our students. And specifically, it's at the high school level. Perhaps it's because our high school students are able to articulate what it is they're feeling and what it is that's hurting them. We had a meeting with Senator Harkman, and I thank Senator Harkman for joining us and for hearing our students out. And it was a meeting about sports, but sports never came up. Our students spoke about their emotional well-being and how they needed athletics, and we can do this safely. And we've been meeting with each team individually. Masks will be worn. That's part of the difference on the high school level compared to the college level. There will be a testing program. There will be a code of conduct. There'll be an informed consent form. There will be so many different documents that, and protocols that our students have to follow. There are questions about wrestling, and while I understand wrestling individually may be the highest risk of sports as a team, the students are completely isolated. It's not a team sport. And there is no interaction with the teammates within a six-foot distance. So we can do this, and we can do this safely. And I stand with all of our students. I stand with all of our students, every one of them. Our kindergarten students all the way up through our high school seniors. We need to find a way to get the arts back. The arts mean so much. Sports are just one genre that students can express themselves. So I will be advocating to return the arts. Some students had expressed themselves on a basketball court or on an athletic field, others on a stage or in a concert hall, and all deserve the same opportunity. So I share that with you. Dr. Corsaro, I invited you here because I know what I know and I know what I don't know. You're the medical expert. You're the person on whom, with whom I've spoken honestly, I think, every day since March 6th. And I just want to remind the board and remind the community, on March 6th of 2020, I recall sitting in the middle school conference room, and we had banned a Palooza that night where we were expecting many, many people in that gym. And Dr. Corsaro and our team, my cellphone was on the middle of the table, and Dr. Corsaro was on the line with our team. And Dr. Corsaro was talking to us about this thing called coronavirus and COVID and his concerns. And he said, Dr. Hatter, this thing has the ability to spread, and I'm very concerned. And we had a great conversation, and we ultimately ended up deciding to cancel. It was the best decision we could have made as a school district. We had about 4,000 people coming through our facility that week, and it was Dr. Corsaro's advice. So, Doc, I will never forget that. I think you and I have spoken every day, at least once a day, and I don't think that's an exaggeration, since March 6th. So I thank you. I just wanted to bring you on in case the board had any questions about wrestling, about any of the high-risk sports. I honestly, the six-foot and the three-foot, I would love to hear anything that you can share, what I have heard from the DOH in writing, in writing, is that I must adhere to six feet. So anything that you can share, I'd appreciate as well.
Your explanation, Dr. Hatter, was excellent, and I applaud your presentation because it was totally understandable, and everything that you said was, in fact, factual. I just want to emphasize a few points just for the sake of the audience here. Number one, regarding the three-foot rule within schools, this has become a contentious issue across the county, and a couple of facts that you have to keep in mind. Fact number one, the CDC maintains the six-foot distance is necessary within schools. They have not backed down on that recommendation. That is in writing and factual, and they haven't changed their position. That's fact number one. Number two, with regard to New York State DOH, in their original guidance, they had a sentence that said either six feet or barriers and masks. And when they were confronted with that ambiguous statement, they backed down. They said, no, 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 it's six-foot distance. You can have barriers, and you should have masks. So verbally, that was their position. They haven't put in writing anything different since then. However, the local Departments of Health reaffirm exactly what I just said. I confirmed those two issues with the Westchester County Department of Health just prior to this meeting. And Dr. Wong, who's the Westchester County DOH representative, reaffirm what I'm telling you this evening. They also, they also mentioned that in terms of quarantine, the new guidelines are slightly streamlined and more surgical, and it's just within six feet for a 10-minute period with an index case who's positive. Do you have to quarantine contacts? So a direct contact by definition is someone who has been within six feet with or without a mask for a period of 10 or more minutes. So if we were to decrease the six-foot distance, it'll definitely result in more quarantining. And this is what we want to avoid because as soon as we start to have large-scale quarantining, this is when we have to close classes or more. So those are the three major, major factors that go into the six-foot distance. Not until the Department of Health, and they're going to be relying upon the CDC, not until the Department of Health makes a statement in writing that we all can read, can we even think about the concept of decreasing that six-foot distance? Remember that we are really doing well within the schools, and it's because of the combination of numerous mitigating factors. These are things that we do to decrease the possibility of disease transmission. And if we, if we backstep with any one of these, we could see spikes within the school, and we would be back to where we were before. Remember that Westchester County at large is still having an extremely high rate of infectivity. Even though things are going down, and the trend is extremely encouraging, we still haven't achieved a level where it's, Westchester is considered below a high level of infectivity, even higher than neighboring communities such as Plutnam and other surrounding counties. So we can't let our guard down yet. The trend is good. But I'm fearful that if we decrease any of these mitigating factors, we can result in other problems.
And Doc, what we've discussed, I know what I've advocated to you because I have asked you to consider modifying your position on this. So what we've talked about is we'll look at as vaccinations become more widely available, as transmission levels come down, then we can certainly go to DOH and have that conversation. And I think, you know, before I continue on, I'll ask the board, Jackie, that concludes my presentation. I appreciate the time to be able to share this update. I know this has been on the mind of the board. I know the board is very committed to returning our students. I thank you. First of all, I want to thank the board because you have been nothing but supportive and relentless and unwavering in your commitment to return children to school, to provide the safest atmosphere for our faculty, staff, and students alike. And I appreciate all of you. I really do. So at this point, I shared the update that I wanted to share. We're returning additional groups of students. We're going to be running a parallel effort. I'd like to be able to work with some groups on looking at getting the DOH to clarify, amend, modify, whatever the correct word is, their position on the six-foot guidance, because all I have in writing in an email and all Dr. Corsaro has in his email is a mandate of six feet.
I'd like to add just one last point, is that I speak to the DOH as often as I speak to Dr. Hatter on a daily basis. So this message has been presented to them loud and clear, and most recently, as recently as 5:30 this evening, the message was sent.
Thank you. And Jackie, I turn it back over to you. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate both of your detailed explanations. It's very helpful going forward, and we were committed from day one to follow the guidelines of the DOH, which is one housekeeping. This is a board meeting, and so we're not taking comments from the community. So if I see somebody has their hand raised, we're not calling on people. So I apologize if you're waiting, but we won't be doing that.
Right. There was the ability to submit written comments.
Right. And we have those, but people who have their hands raised, we can't do that. So I'm going to go to the board, but you know, I just want to make sure we're very clear. We're following DOH guidelines 100%. What DOH has told us to do is what we have done, what our medical director and our legal and our insurance, that's what we're following. So while it may seem off to do it, not bring kids back, but bring back sports, it's what DOH is recommending. It's what their guidelines tell us we should be doing. So I just want to be very clear that it's DOH that is guiding us in doing this. Mike, do you have any questions?
I do, Jackie. Thank you for that update, Dr. Hatter, and thank you, Dr. Corsaro, for joining us tonight. Question that I had, Dr. Hatter, you mentioned the ability, the effort to bring back kindergarten five days a week next month. Can you clarify what has to happen, what the timeframe is? I mean, are we, March 1st, are we going to have full five-day kindergarten? What has to happen?
No, it'll likely be later in March. Not likely. It will be later in March. There is an element of hiring that has to happen. There's construction. There's deconstruction. There are groupings that have to be made. There are so many other logistical considerations because our kindergarteners do require support throughout the school day. So we have a wonderful kindergarten team. I see some are on this call, and I have the highest respect for our kindergarten team, and I think they all recognize the enormity of the ask that we're putting The enormity of the ask that that we're putting in here. And there are details that need to be worked out. We're going to engage our teachers in that conversation. Because I honestly, I think they're best positioned to answer many of the logistical questions. But there are outside of some of the construction, deconstruction pieces, their staff hiring, advertising positions. Anyone on the call, if if you'd like to come work in the school district as a certified teaching assistant. You can send me an email, ourhatter@yorktown.org. It's H A T T A R at yorktown.org. We will be having some certified teaching assistant positions available. And if anyone is interested in working in the district, you're welcome to send us an email. So that's the first, I just advertised now for the position. So that's the first step to move this work forward. But there there's a supply piece. There's bringing some furniture back in, configuring the furniture, putting some soundproofing in to mitigate some of the sound. That will happen. There's just re, we're going to be using spaces that have not been used in this format. In the past. So this is us honestly using every square inch of what we have. It's not perfect. But I I don't want good to be the enemy of perfect here. We're going to work out the details to make it as perfect as we can, as it can be. But that's going to take a little more time. And and that's, so that's why I'm not going to put a hard timeline on it first. I'd like to develop that timeline with our teachers and with our staff. But I anticipate that this will happen at some point during the second half of March.
Thank you.
Anthony, did you have any questions?
I got it off. So I guess I'm, we're speaking about one end of the equation, the students. Just about the teachers, are they, they're going to just hop and we're going to have them back with no unions involved or anything? I mean, they'll come back as, you know.
Our, our teachers are here. Our teachers are here. They're working every day and and our teachers have been wonderful. I I really have a ton of respect for the work of our teachers. Our teachers' union has been great. They've been wonderful partners, all of the unions in the district, to be honest with you. We have several different bargaining units. They have all said. We want the kids back and children first. So all of our collective bargaining units have been wonderful and I'm I'm publicly sharing that.
So when we come back and if it's maybe before other schools, they'll come back?
Yes, if if, so we're all back. In terms of the students, the only part here that's holding us up from bringing more students back. Is the six foot distancing requirement because that inherently reduces the occupancy in a classroom. We we max out our classes, but no, our teachers have been terrific. I I can't ask any more of our teachers at this point. They have been. Dynamite. Our 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 collective bargaining units have been absolutely dynamite, very kid first. They want clarity. The collective bargaining units want clarity from the DOH, the local DOH, the state DOH. And if if the state DOH tells you, well, it is very clear, it it obviously is not. It, we're having this conversation, so it's obviously not clear. So I would just love for them to just give us one more clarification of what their position is on the distancing in in language that I can understand.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Rashmi. So I have two questions. So first, Dr. Hatter, I do commend your efforts and the administration's efforts to bring back the kindergarten students. I think it's wonderful. I think there's another cohort of kids that really need to be in school as well. And those are our high schoolers. I know you have shared in the past. You know, about bringing that possibly bringing them back to school and the need for them to be in school. And when these kids went kindergarten, it was a half day kindergarten. And they are looking at academics, managing their stress and really I think their life ahead, right? And these can be stressful times for them. So would you be able to speak to? What some plans are for that group, keeping in mind, of course, the six feet distancing and all that.
I can speak to it, but I don't think I can speak to the entirety of it at the at this time at least. We're right now, we have already returned ninth grade students in. Our special education programs and and that has been a wonderful. Step or or we've given the opportunity to return. Not everyone has accepted the opportunity to return. We're now going to be moving to tenth grade and then eleventh and twelfth. And then at that time. We need to be able to understand what additional capacity the building has. So the high school is probably where we're best positioned. What I will tell you is that. None of the work is mutually exclusive where it's it's, they're they're not necessarily. Everything hinges on our special education students returning and what percentage. And then how many additional students and do we look at ninth grade students who had not had a high school experience at this point? Do we look at our seniors who had twelve weeks last year and then their senior year upended? So we're working through those with our high school administration team, but we certainly have a commitment. To bring back as many of our students across the board and and the issues are just different. I've had some questions about, well, why don't you just put the elementary schools students at the high school? That just makes perfect sense. Of course, it does not make perfect sense. It doesn't make sense for so many reasons. It doesn't make sense because number one, we need the high school students back as well. They need to be in school too. For all the reasons that you just mentioned, Rashmi. But also beyond that. Do we really want five year olds in buildings with eighteen year olds or six year olds with eighteen year olds? Our children are wonderful. Our high school students are some of the best people I've ever come across. But I overhear conversations that I don't want my seven year old to hear at times as I go through the hallway and our children are wonderful. And I do overhear some of those conversations. The, but also going further. The weight of the doors to get into the bathroom at a high school are weighted differently than the doors at an elementary school. The heights of toilets at a high school are different than the heights of toilet at an elementary school. The heights of boards and and interactive displays, the heights of, there are so many different configurations. The cafeteria lunch lines, we at Brookside, we just redid a cafeteria. There's a certain height that you set at an early elementary and then there's a certain height that you would set at at a high school level. So there are so many, and I just threw out, I think, four or five, there are about fourteen or fifteen, maybe even twenty considerations. Why it does not make sense to bring an elementary school student to learn at a high school. Staffing aside, which which is not even a staffable scenario. But Rashmi, you do have our commitment that we will be working toward returning as many students as we can. I just can't promise you right now how far we'll get in that work without some relief from the Department of Health.
Yeah, thank you. And I and I agree. I think you raise some very good points and I I I agree that a phased approach. Does make sense. My other question has to do with, and I know you touched upon it in your presentation. Which is, I think we have work to do in advocating for bringing back the arts, right? Whether it's theater, band, the orchestra. And what can we do? And what can we do more? What can our parents do to, you know, help the efforts there?
That that's a great question. I'll give you the answer that I think would would be the correct answer. Or or at least one correct answer, and I think that's to advocate to the agencies that regulate the school districts. We want to provide our students with every single opportunity that we can, any opportunity that we're permitted to. We offered, you'll remember, we were given the option this summer of offering either a remote extended school year program. Or an in person, a hybrid model. We were one of very few school districts in the region to offer an in person option. Why? Because we were given the flexibility to do so and we have the best staff around. So I thank Mike Rosen. I thank his leadership team. I thank the teachers. So I think advocacy at the local level in terms of the county level. Not at the town level, at the at the county level, at the state level, the governance office, the department of, state department of health, local department of health. County Executive Latimer is a terrific, terrific advocate of public education. He's a terrific supporter of public education. I've known him for many years since my days in Eastchester. And he is just a terrific supporter of schools and very sensitive to the needs of schools. So I I think the message would be received well with him. Our student athletes advocated with Senator Harkam and Assemblyman Byrne, and they have been wonderful to our students. I appreciate Senator Harkam hearing our students out. I appreciate Assemblyman Byrne's willingness to hear our students out. I appreciate the the local health department for at least responding to our inquiries. So I think advocacy at at those levels can help. And and once we can open up additional opportunities to our students, I think our district has demonstrated that that we'll be offering those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just before I go on, I just, somebody's come on late. I just want the people in the audience to know this is a board meeting. And we are not taking questions from the audience. So if your hand is raised, we will not be calling on you. Thank you. Lisa.
Thanks. So thank you, Dr. Corsaro and Dr. Hatter for the information. I I do have a couple of questions. Dr. Hatter, along the lines of you saying that you you're trying to use up every inch of the building. There are large spaces in in all of our buildings. There's gyms, there's libraries. There's an auditorium at the high school. In an effort to get as many kids back in the buildings as possible, have we thought about using those spaces? Have we thought about using French Hill? And I've heard some people ask about the community center in town. Have we thought about trying to use that building for space? Can you address those issues?
Sure, sure. So at the elementary schools, all of the large spaces, all of the closets. Everything's being utilized at the elementary level. There, we we are maxed out of space and and the reason why we need a little more time. Is there are a few more details that we have to still hash out as part of our schedule. Space is not something that we're long on in terms of looking at the library, looking at the gym. We had a capacity study done not only by Dr. Saversky, but we worked with Flow for Schools to outline every single. It's space in the district and how many desks could you fit in with six feet? We're now undertaking a study on three feet. How would that look? Because come September, my expectation is that we are going to have our students all back, at least at the K five level, in person learning five days per week. My hope is that the circumstances in the region will allow for that. French Hill, Tom, I'm actually going to, Tom, if you can speak to French Hill and what it would take to make that. Facility school ready. It's, we have some childcare providers in there now and I I guess it's okay for a childcare program. But Tom, school ready, security, technology, infrastructure.
Sure. French Hill has none of the upgrades. For technology that have been implemented in the other schools in the last ten years. French Hill's going on the eleventh year of being idled. So that would require a massive infusion of capital. All of the security upgrades, physical security upgrades that have been made in all of our buildings that. Everyone sees as standard now are not present at French Hill. Even the the infrastructure regarding parking lot capacity and things of that nature. So it's not a building we could open the doors and put students in and say that it's an equal. Educational experience in terms of security technology and some of the other upgrades that have already been made across the school district.
And it's not even close. It's it's not even close. That that that's the reality.
Millions of dollars of investment away from making that building close to being ready.
May I ask you a question about timeline? It's even if we had millions of dollars, how long would that type of thing take? Because that's a large project that has to go through SED, correct?
And any project at this point would take a minimum eighteen months to get off the ground with regard to planning. Obtaining capital and approval from the.
And that's why this summer, French Hill, outside of the fact that it was, I I forget what the number that our architects and construct. Because we looked at it, we absolutely looked at it. We studied it. We walked the campus. We looked at how much money is it going to take and then recurring costs to turn that into. So the numbers that we had were upwards of ten million dollars to get the facility operational in a school capacity. And then the recurring expenses are are pretty high. Because you look at all the personnel that you have in one building, you're going to have to replicate that in another building. So the operating expenses annually or something that would exceed the tax cap for us. So that that's another concern that we would have had. In terms of the building you referenced in town, Lisa, I did have a brief conversation with the town supervisor. And I think I fear that that building is further behind than French Hill is in terms of being school ready. And and it's size wise, there there are some limitations that we would have there.
Thank you. I I have one other question and I, this might be more properly directed to Dr. Corsaro. And I've seen some pictures of. Like try, like our science fair trifold cardboard things, but made out of like, like a plastic. Kind of plexiglass thing that you could put on the desk, serving as like a barrier. Is that something that we could utilize and bring the desks closer together? So more kids could be in the classroom and we could get more kids there?
Lisa, that was the question that I was trying to address before. The barriers don't replace the six foot distancing. They they would enhance it, but they don't replace it. To have an effective barrier, you would have to use more than just the the trifold on on the desk polycarbonate. And if we were to enhance that, you know, that type of barrier with floor to up to eight feet barriers around the student. The cost for the polycarbonate would be astronomical. But we're still at a point where if there's an infected student within the class, even. Even though there's the polycarbonate barriers. If the student is less than six feet and there's a positive case, then we would have to quarantine the students. So the public health department has essentially said the the barriers are an additional mitigating factor. But not to replace the six foot distance. That's where the confusion was set in with the original statement. Now, there's at least one district in Westchester is taking that statement or that sentence literally. And they're challenging the Department of Health. That particular district may even get away with it because of the the size of their classrooms and the demographics of the community. However, it's not in keeping with the Westchester County or the New York State Department of Health guidelines. I want to emphasize that we're following those guidelines. And the 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 district that's that's telling people that they're going to bypass it. Are doing something which is categorically illegal. They may get away with it. They may not have an increase in influx in their community infectivity rate. However, it's it's dependent on the the demographics of the community, the compliance of the people who live within the community. There's so many factors that go into disease transmission. That you have to really follow the guidelines in order to maintain the statistics that we've been able to show within our schools.
And just to share, just to add to that, Lisa, I spoke to Ed Braddock, who performs our fire inspections. And he's also a code enforcement officer with the New York State Education Department. And Ed spoke, interestingly enough, I had this conversation with him, just in my understanding of the three feet barriers. And Ed shared that in his, in the many, many inspections that he's done recently. Those three foot barriers are being used in addition to six feet. He said that he has not seen a district less than five feet in his travels at this point. But he also wasn't very high on the idea of this trifold. Because the student sitting in their chair with the barrier on their desk. There's no protection left and right from the student sitting in their chair. So the cough, the sneeze would really need to, the student would really need to lean into the desk to. Give any semblance of protection, but the student sitting in their chair, either straight up or sitting back in their chair, there there is no protection left or right.
Thank you.
I just want to again reiterate, we are not calling on people from the audience. This is a board meeting. So if you're raising your hand, we're not going to be calling on you. I apologize. Cheryl?
Yes, first off, I just want to say thank you to Dr. Corsaro and Dr. Hatter for all the information. It's it's very helpful as we move forward. One of my, my one question for tonight is, as we start to bring in more students. What impact and what changes do we have to make to busing? Because if we see more students in the schools, we're obviously going to have more children on the buses. So how are we positioned to accommodate that?
Yeah, so so far, so far, we still, especially at the elementary school, so. so far what we're seeing is a very high number of drop-offs and pickups. And anyone who's waited on that line in the morning knows that the line to get into the schools takes time and the pickup lines, and we appreciate the patience. So we'll monitor ridership and we'll look at that very closely. So far, the number of students that we anticipate being able to add at this time, and should the DOH relax their guidelines, we'll have to look at that differently and obviously very clearly communicate that to the parents. We don't have the resources. We have a 71 bus fleet. So even on the snow decision calls, I don't know if everyone realizes that we have 71 buses in our fleet and they're on the road for hours upon hours a day. So we'll, we'll absolutely be looking at transportation as one of the other considerations. That's a great point, Cheryl. So we absolutely will be looking at that at this time. I don't see that being an issue because it really is the kindergarten students and it's special education students within the districts. I don't think we'll strain our bus system to the point where a 66 passenger is now not enough at this point. But that's always, as we return more and more students, that's always a consideration.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, so last question from me, Dr. Hatter. If I'm a, a parent, I'm, I'm attending this meeting or I'm watching this meeting, and I'm looking for a way to advocate for my child to either be back in school full-time or to participate in theater, orchestra, band, whatever activities. What's, you know, where should, where should our parents be directing their reach out and their, and their concerns? Who would that go to?
I, at this point, I think it's to the local health department, the state health department, the state education department, the governor's office. I think those are, we get it. I think this board gets it. I, I know the, the expectations of the board are that we want everyone back. I know my expectations and my team and I are already looking at September of 2021 and looking at a full return to certainly K five. And then as many students as we're able to return 612, we get it. I, I don't think it's an absence of us understanding it or being sensitive to the situation. I, I hope, I hope that I'm conveying that, that we do get it and we do want to see the outcome that enables us to return more students to school. But at this point, I just need one of the agencies that regulate us to come out with a very clear position on where they are. And that will help us to determine what our next steps are. So any advocacy, I think, would be to one of those agencies that regulate the school district.
So similar to what happened with high-risk, high-contact sports, we got a direction from the local department of health that if you follow XYZ steps, it will permit it. We're looking for the same kind of direction when it comes to classroom spacing and other activities.
That, that's honestly, that's a perfect analogy. That's exactly what happened. They were not permitting high-risk sports at that time. The governor gave the decision to local health departments. Local health department signed off on it. They gave us a series of steps that we would have to follow if we wanted to do it. We will do anything for our students. So obviously, we're going to do that. So you're, that's a perfect analogy, and hopefully that can translate into other areas.
Great, thank you.
Everyone, I want to thank Dr. Hatter, you, Dr. Cusaro, Lisa and Tom. I know we're in trying times, and I know it's frustrating for parents not to have their kids in school. It's frustrating for us not to have their kids in school. And we're just trying to do what we're allowed to do, and we're trying to follow the guidelines that were given. We don't necessarily always agree with the guidelines we're given, but we're trying to follow the rules the way they're made. And I know it doesn't always seem fair to parents, and I apologize for that. I, I don't know what else to say. We really, really want the kids back. Dr. Hatter, one quick question. DOH told you it's three feet tomorrow. Will we bring the kids back?
We're going to bring as many of them as we can back and then know that we'll be, our team will be ready. And that's, that's the reality, absolutely. And I think our teachers would, would be back. So I just want to clarify a point about the return of special education. So students with IEP in hand, there is going to be a phase-in plan to return K-12. Any student with an IEP in hand will be part of the return plan that we're going to be sharing at the end of the month. So I just wanted to clarify that if, if I miss, if, if there was any confusion that was created.
Are we good? Okay, we're going to go to public comment. People were allowed, instead of raising their hands, allowed to put in public comment and send it to our district clerk by email. Vet, did we get any comments?
Yes, we did. We received seven.
Okay, would you mind reading them? We're going to, we're not going to answer them in order. We're going to read them all. And then we will let Ron or whoever needs to answer them as we, once we get to the end, if that's okay.
Okay. I received one from Mrs. Amy Pearl. And she wrote, there are plans for the town to have the Soundview School and the Kmart shopping area turned into housing developments. With that in mind, what is the district's plan to accommodate more families moving into the area and attending our schools? Coronavirus or not, it seems like the district should be considering the future of its enrollment and how it will accommodate the student population. There is a lot of discussion going on about French Hill to have more of our elementary children receive in-person education due to the six-foot rule. But it is my understanding that this is not feasible as of now. If opening French Hill is not being considered as an option during the pandemic, will it be considered for future use? Question number two from Michelle Turekwe, my apologies if I mispronounced her last name. She would like to know if we could, if we could have used the available 4 million capital reserve monies to expand the schools or open French Hill. Our town population has been increasing, and with the new residential plans currently on the agenda, she feels the money would, would, could have been better spent on needed expansion plans instead of an updated gymnasium. Expansion would certainly fall under a capital improvement, and it would assist in the current issue we have with spacing for COVID guidelines. Question number three, or comments from question number three, Jennifer Ferry. Number one, is the district looking into plexiglass partitions for classrooms in order to circumvent the CDC's six-foot guidelines? Other districts in the state have done this successfully since September and are, and are able to have all students in at the same time without the six-foot rule. Number two, same again from Jennifer Ferry. Why are my children able to sit shoulders to shoulder, shoulder to shoulder with one another waiting, awaiting their parents, but they are unable to do so in the classroom? To be clear, she just wants to be clear that she is fine with them sitting shoulders to shoulder. She just wants to understand why sitting so close to one another is allowed at pickup, but not during the learning day. Number three, again from Jennifer Ferry. If the district has not looked into plexiglass, has the district looked into hiring more staff and finding more space in order to, to space the children out appropriately? Number four from Ms. Ferry. She would like to understand why sports like wrestling, basketball are being allowed, but my kindergartner and second grade graders are not allowed back in the classroom. Young children are unable to voice the concerns in the same manner as a high school student and rely on parents to speak for them, but it does not mean that their voices are less valuable. My kids cry on remote days because they do not like learning on the computer, and it is affecting them mentally and emotionally. The risks of, of having these kids not in the classroom far outweigh any risks of them contracting coronavirus. There is no doubt to support that teachers, students or other staff are at higher risk contracting coronavirus with full impersonal learning. Other states and countries have been able to do this successfully. There is no reason we should not be able to accomplish the, the same goals. Question number four from Connie Davis. Why are we spending 4 million on gym renovation, renovations when that money could go to getting French Hill ready to have students or expanding our existing buildings? Or why are sports taking precedent over education at this time? I would also like to know those answers. But while we are waiting for our kids to be able to go back to school full-time or at least on more consistent basis, she would like to know, how are you going to make this hybrid model better? She has a fourth grader and a first grader. They are both struggling, especially her first grader. Her kindergarten year was disrupted at the most crucial time. And while she feels she is learning and growing her first grade year has been anything but up to the education level and standards that brought us to this Yorktown in the first place. She does not claim the teachers. She believes most of them are doing their best with what they have been giving. However, her first grader consistently is having her, her meets canceled on remote days, which means she gets between 30 and one, 30 minutes and one hour of face-to-face instruction on those days. How can these days be classified as full learning day when that is absolutely not the case? This should have been on the top of the list of the problems to have solutions to before, before they happen when planning the school year. As a family, they have discussed going to the full remote model, and both of the children became very upset by the idea. They both absolutely love being in school, and those days are amazing for them. It helps with their mental health as well. There must be a better solution than what has been happening for the past five months. You need to do better. All of the children deserve to be taken care of, not just the students who play sports or have IEPs, all of them. Number five from Ms. Jolene Milo. I would like to submit, when can we, excuse me, when can we expect to see our children back to full-time in school learning? Kindergarten in particular. What needs to be done for this to happen and what is the timeline? What safety protocols will be in place? Question number six from Christian Jarrah. Number one from Christian Jarrah. We keep hearing about the number of cases in the schools and in the town, but we don't hear about the number of hospitalizations or deaths. If people are only getting sick and recovering, why are we destroying the mental health of our children? Why can't the children attend school five days a week? Question number two from Mr. Jarrah. If we as parents sign a waiver stating that we will not hold the school, town or Board of Ed liable if our children get COVID, will all, will our children be able to attend school five days a week without following the guidelines? Number three for Mr. Jarrah. Are the Yorktown schools following the guidelines because the state or federal government will withhold funding as a result? Question number four from Mr. Jarrah. There are many school districts that we know of that are attending school five days a week while being only three feet apart. Why isn't that an option for us? Question number seven from Megan Goldstein. Okay. I'm a parent of three children in New Yorktown Central School District, all between grades K through five. Like many other parents in the district, I feel very strongly that elementary students should be in school five days per week, especially the youngest learners in grades K three. Ms. Goldstein did sign the circulating letter expressing these feelings and have confidence in the American Academy of Pediatrics' recommendation to have students in school five days, even if that means reducing spacing to three feet. With that being said, she has concerns regarding the remote day structure during the elementary hybrid learning model. And, and she can appreciate why the system was developed in favor of streaming the remote students into the classroom. However, the limited direct instruction of one and a half hours per day has been interrupted on many occasions with canceled meets. In order to provide the children with the most effective and invaluable instruction, we need to provide them with a consistent predictable routine with clear expectations and feedback. The disruptions that, that a canceled meet causes to the learning day at home are challenging for young children to overcome. She's spoken to her school principal and realized that staffing is an issue. She's sure bringing the students in full-time will help alleviate the stress caused by, caused by spreading the staff too thin. But until that time, can considerations be made to improve the remote learning day? Is there a way to provide substitutes in these circumstances? Invite the canceled remote group to join another remote group in the grade level or stream them in their, to their teacher. My children's teachers have been nothing short of phenomenal, and all success, and all success they have experienced this year are credited to their teachers' tireless efforts and endless positivity. But the frequency of disruptions are becoming frustrating. This issue, this issue topped with an upcoming planned winter break, and the disruptions caused by winter weather in New York make it difficult to keep the children motivated and engaged in learning from home. As the adults, parents, educators, voters, decision-makers, I truly believe that we need to find solutions to the problems that the children are just too young to voice themselves. While I'm remaining hopeful for good news about a return to five-day in-person instruction, I would like to see that we are carefully evaluating and advising the systems in place to be most beneficial in the meantime. Thank you. And that is the end for public comment.
Vivek, thank you very much. I really appreciate your reading them all. I thank everybody for their public comment and took the time to write. I think I see two issues. I see one that goes back to what you were just talking about, Dr. Hatter, which is the remote learning, and there's a second that has to do with the development. And I know you're going to talk about the development a little bit further on. So can you just address some of the issues that were brought up about the remote learning? And then we can talk about the development afterwards?
Yeah, absolutely. In no particular order, I'm going to try to go off of as much as I can remember and as much as I can jot down. With regard to the comments about the dismissal procedures, that's a conversation that you'd want to have with the school building to better understand what the dismissal procedures are. I don't know if that's necessarily a question that, that the board and the superintendent would be able to answer in terms of how students are lined up specifically. We can certainly look into it. I'd be happy to look into it. But I would also suggest initiating a call at the building level because that's where the matter most appropriately resides. There were some questions about students coming back to school, coming back to school. I've announced the plans. I've announced the limitations. So I understand that these comments, and, and it's not that we're not accepting comments during these meetings. We are accepting comments. They're due to the district clerk at 4:00 PM on the Monday of the board meeting. So I believe most of these, although they were submitted before my presentation, I believe many of these have been answered. With regard to how many people have become hospitalized or dead, fortunately, no one has passed away. We've had a limited number of hospitalizations, so it hasn't, again, been widespread. The, I would, I would tell you that off the top of my head, I don't know the number. It's not high in terms of how many people have been hospitalized with COVID, but we have had some hospitalizations. We've had some hospitalizations of family members. So it, it's in the household, our student, one of our students has it, and a family member gets hospitalized. So I will share that information.
But rumors people in the town have been hospitalized, just not in our district, correct?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, of course. With regard to the waiver, somebody asked if they could sign a waiver. You can't waive your child's rights away. You can waive them away until they become 18, and then the child has their own rights that they can exercise. So I just wanted to clarify that, that you're not able to waive away your child's rights. Are we following guidelines for, no, we're following, I think it was a funding question. Is this because of the withholding of funding? We're following medical guidelines from the medical experts in a pandemic. I don't know if there needs to be another incentivization to follow the expert guideline, guidelines out there of medical professionals on a medical matter. So could they withhold funding? I'm sure they could. I'll tell you that that's not the driving force behind the decisions that we're making. It's the safety, health and safety of our students, faculty, staff, and the homes that each of these people live with. Our faculty and staff have families. Our students have families. There are multi-generational households within our community that there are immunocompromised staff that we have. So the decisions that we're making depend on, on COVID are all about health and safety at this point. With regard to the meets being canceled, yes, that's been, that's been a little bit of a problem for us. There have been instances where we've had staff be quarantined. We've had staff come down with COVID. We've had staff get ill with other illnesses. Substitutes are very difficult to get in this environment. And I think all of our teachers on this call know how difficult it is to get substitutes within our building. It, it's not a position that is easily filled in general. And then when you layer a pandemic on that in a school setting, it becomes even more challenging to fill substitute vacancies. But yes, we're perpetually having conversations about, and I think there was another question from another community member about the hot remote day of the hybrid model. We continue to look at that and how we can make that better. Have we hired additional staff? We absolutely have hired additional staff. And we've been utilizing every, every single staff member that we have to the greatest extent that we possibly can. And, and we continue to explore all of the options available to us. About sports not taking priority, I just want to, I, I'm not even going to repeat it because I think I shared our rationale behind it. But I just wanted to acknowledge that question as well. I think those were the extent of the questions, Lisa, Tom. I don't know if I missed anything.
I see it. There's a couple of, people talk about other school districts being able to return students where we're unable to. Can you talk about the fact we're, we are, every school district is different? And their spacing difference, their superpopulation totals are different. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Sure. There are, if six feet doesn't become three feet, there are essentially two ways to return students. You can have a lot of space, if you have a lot of space that's unused. And I've spoken to most of the superintendents that have been able to return their elementary school students to full in-person learning. And there was one of two themes that recurred in those conversations. Number one, we just had so much space. We have an unused lower level in our building that we just had to use. I wish we had that problem. Or the other conversation was such a high percentage of our students went remote that we were able to take the remaining students and bring them back every day. Those were the two. I, I have only heard three feet in Westchester and Putnam County. I've heard it in, I believe, two school districts. One certainly, I think that second one is going that way. And I think there's a district either in Rockland or in Duchess County that's also going in that direction with a three-feet distance. I'm curious to see how that plays out in other school districts. But the first two circumstances, having the space or having a high percentage of students go fully remote, creating opportunities to bring more students back are the only other two situations I'm aware of.
Okay. And then the one last question that people asked a couple of times, we were talking about opening French Hill, but they're asking us to take the money for the gym that's already been approved and transfer it over to reopening French Hill. Can you speak to that?
Yeah. In terms of French Hill, we've, I thought we were pretty clear on that. The timing is not in our favor. It wasn't in our favor last summer. It wasn't in our favor last spring because the delays were even higher at that point. And, and the cost. And now when you look at, okay, well, you're going to do the gym, the voters authorize, so our community here on this call authorize those monies be used for a specific purpose in the capital reserve fund. The school district is obligated to honor the wishes of the voters. And the voters express their position when they overwhelmingly approve that those monies be extracted from the capital reserve fund to be used for the purposes specified in, in the scope of the project. So that's one of the pieces. But in fact, the gymnasium, part of the gymnasium upgrade is an HVAC upgrade that will get us to that MRF-13 filtration that we're looking for in as many spaces as possible, which is a really, really important component to bringing students back safely to a larger extent. So the, the voters gave us the direction on how to use those monies. We've made that determination. That was approved, I believe, two years ago, two school years ago. That was approved on how those monies would be extracted. We're already down that road. Monies have been expended at this point. And to go back would be to defeat the will of the voter and I don't think we have the legal authority to do that.
We've also awarded the bids, is that correct? So we really can't undo what?
Yes, now bids were awarded. We're, we're down that road. The road, we're down that road at this point. We're, we're too far down that road. With regard to any remaining monies in the capital reserve, those are conversations that we'll continue to have.
Jackie, can I just point out that, that the gym issue or the gym question ties into the process that you have to go through in order to get a project completed at the school district level. And I think if, if the public understood that a little bit better, they'd, they'd understand why, even if we had decided in September that we needed a new building, for example, that by the time the building was drafted, approved by SED and a bids awarded, construction started. I mean, you're talking at a minimum two years before we would even break ground, right? So that's, that's the issue that you run into with these projects. And it's why we've been continually updating our surveys, trying to plan ahead and figure out how we're going to accommodate additional students. And I know we'll talk about that in the next section. But it's not as simple as people want it to be to just say, well, you know, put a new building up or put a new wing on that building. As unfortunately, as I had to learn in this role, building at the school level is completely different than I want to put an addition on my house and I can have permits and everything in, you know, no time. It, it's just a completely different animal. And so, you know, the, the gym project was approved years ago and it's, and it's now just getting implemented. So I just want people to understand the timeframes that we deal with. And it's extremely difficult to plan a normal project, never mind an emergency project like we're talking about. It's, it's virtually impossible. By the time we're done getting the project, this'll, you know, kids will be back in the classroom. It's just, it's frustrating and I, I don't think people really understand the timelines that we have to deal with, with these things. That's all.
I think the other important point to make is that in all of this discussion about trying to get kids back in the classrooms and trying to maintain the distance, I, I think that the district has explored every single avenue possible. And they've, they've used every nook and cranny they could find. It's not like we just took something off the table. Everything has been explored, explored. Am I correct with that, Dr. Hatter?
Yeah, you absolutely are. There is not space that I can find at this point. To be, there's not space to be manufactured. There's not, it, it dovetails perfectly with the second conversation that I think we need to have, which I believe was referenced by one or two of the public comments this evening with regard to the developments in town. So I think it's well documented that we're very tight on space. And I'd be happy to segue into that conversation unless you feel that there's something else that, that we ought to discuss.
No, go right ahead.
At this point, would it be okay, Dr. Cusaro? I know Dr. Cusaro was my first call this morning and I know what time that call, well, actually it was my second call. Director of Facilities, when I was outside driving the campus at 4:15 AM, was my first call at 4:15 in the morning as I was on this campus, making sure it was safe. But my second call was Dr. Cusaro and that was about fourteen or fifteen, fifteen hours ago at this point. So can we let Dr. Cusaro go?
Absolutely. Dr. Cusaro, thank you so much for everything you've done for our students and our.
You're very welcome. I'll be always there for you. Good evening, everyone.
Appreciate it.
Have a good night. Thank you.
So with regard to the developments and, and this goes to superintendent's update, I just first want to thank our community for logging on. I would love to have this kind of participation and energy and excitement at all of our meetings. This is terrific. I, I love having our community as part of our meetings and just really, really excited to have the, the, the interest and the energy. With regard to developments in town, I'm sure you become aware that there are several developments that are happening in town. Most recently, there's that, the old Soundview Prep location, which is diagonally across from Town Hall. My understanding is that, that that will produce some units. I understand that it's more targeted for senior citizens, but that will have potentially an impact on our schools. Yorktown Green, which is where the Kmart center is, that can have an impact. I understand that's kind of a mixed-use space with one and two-bedroom apartments located in that, in that space. The exact numbers, I think, are still being finalized. We just know it's been reported in, in the newspaper at this point. The Wyatt property is also a conversation. I believe that's twenty-six units or so. The Roma Building is another development for us to keep our eyes on. Even a couple of years ago, the Bear Mountain Triangle Project, which I think had a hundred and eighty units attached to it. I'm not quite sure where that is. So these, there are several developments that our eyes are on and there's no question that we're going to have to take some sort of action with regard to our school capacity and being able to bring more students in. Because historically, what we've observed is that each unit that comes online produces about one and a half children within the school district on average, right? So when you look at a three-hundred-unit development, you're, you're looking at about four-hundred-and-fifty children, which is a substantial increase. And again, I, I don't know if it's three hundred units. I don't know if it's a hundred units ultimately that will be approved. But it's about one and a half students per unit. So these are all things that we would just factor into the calculus. Ultimately, if the children are here, we're going to educate them and, and they're going to learn in our schools. So we have convened the committees, Dr. Saversky can be, completed his study in the district. We have looked at the different options, the different models. I'd like to bring those models to the steering committee of the district. I think fiscal advisory is also going to have to become by, involved here because there are just two kind of recurring themes that we've heard in our study. Do you open French Hill? That one keeps coming up and up and up and, and there's a very high recurring costs with that. Because when you think about the staff that have to be in that building every day, day in and day out, not just the faculty, but, but the tech staff, the nursing staff, the health office, the custodial staff, the administrative staff, the clerical staff, the clinicians in the building. Those are all things that we have to be prepared for. Or do we add on to some of the existing buildings that we have? So is it new construction? Is it adding on? Those, those are pretty much the two avenues that you have. You can look at some kind of new construction. You can look at renovating an existing structure. But I think I'd like to come to the steering committee with some of the options. Steering had met and had discussed some of these options. We've worked with our architects. We understand what some of the demands are of the different models. And I think I'd love to be able to, I think we will be able to come up with some good solutions, but we need to start planning now. Because as Mike mentioned and as you mentioned, Jackie, and as Tom mentioned, it takes time to get the approvals at SED. Takes time for the bidding process, to award the bids, to vet the contractors, to get the shovels in the ground and begin the work and then to be able to outfit all the finishings and the fixtures and the technology and the security vestibules and, and all of the different, and then the recruitment and hiring of staff, all at a time that we're uncertain if the projects will be seen to the very end. And all at a time that we're not sure if all of these monies will be aidable because no students are in a renovated building. So those are some of the questions that I think steering and certainly fiscal advisory would be able to help us with. But we are actively planning. The developments are real. But I, I'm assuming there will be questions from the board with regard to timeline of these projects and scope of the projects that we'd like to get some more definitive answers to.
Yeah, I'm sure there are. Anthony, do you have any questions?
Not at this moment.
Lisa?
No questions. Thank you.
No questions.
Mike?
No, I'm good.
Freshly?
I'm glad. Thank you.
Cheryl?
No questions. Thank you.
All right. I think there probably are a lot of things that we need to understand about these developments. Because they talk about developments in town and we don't really know what stage they're in, how long they're going to take, where they're going to show up. Is it possible to maybe have some discussion with the town? You have the town give us some of that information in writing so we have something to work towards?
Yeah, Tom and I will craft a letter with the board and we'll, we'll all work on it together. And I think we, what we're really looking to understand is timeline and scope. I think those are the two really big questions that we have so that we can prepare ourselves.
Correct. And, and I just, so the community understands, and I assume we have the hand raised again, but we, public comment time is, is passed. But we are, we are, we are aware of it and we will plan for it as necessary to accommodate whatever students come into our district, correct?
Yeah.
All right. What else you got for us?
I, I think we're about two hours or so into our meeting. I think anything that I have can be saved until another meeting at this point. I think we touched on all of the big topics. I do, I do want to commend Scott Whiteman, one of our students, NIA triple A award winner for New York State. Top male student athlete in New York State in terms of this essay writing. Well-rounded. They look at service to the community. They look at academics, athletics. There, there's a written piece. And Scott will be representing New York State at the next level of this award. And then he's representing Yorktown very proudly. So I just want to give Scott a very quick shout out and acknowledgement.
Okay. Are you, you have a presentation coming up next one?
So we're going to defer the social emotional support in the district to the next meeting. I apologize to our clinicians. This part of the meeting ran over and, and, and it was important. So we're going to defer that one. Tom will take us quickly through the budget presentation, debt service and transportation. This is the next presentation in our budget series of presentations. All of our presentations are posted to our district website. So if you click on the link to the presentation, everything will be there. Also, the archived minutes of the meeting will have Tom's narration and the questions of the board also included.
Okay.
Thanks, Dr. Hatter. Thank you, everybody, and good evening. Tonight is our third presentation in a series of seven budget presentations. The following slides, we will discuss the status of the district's debt service and transportation. Next slide, please. Just a few weeks ago, the district's credit rating was affirmed as double A plus by Standard and Poor's. Their credit rating, one of the highest in New York State amongst S and P rated school districts, allows us to borrow money at very low interest rates. Next slide, please. This chart represents annual total debt service payments, including related interest costs on our outstanding debt obligations. At this point, the bonds issued in support of the two thousand and six authorization represent the entirety of our capital indebtedness. As the chart indicates, our debt service costs will remain fairly constant for the next three years at a level of approximately three-point-six million dollars annually. After that three-year period, the outstanding debt begins to mature in six annual phases, phasing out completely after the two thousand twenty-eight, twenty-nine school year. In January of two thousand twenty-one, the district refinanced two portions of outstanding debt without changing the maturity dates. The district's credit rating for the refinancing and for all of our existing debt was reaffirmed by Standard and Poor's as double A plus. Competition for that debt in the open market was significant, resulting in an historic low interest rate for the district of zero-point-two-six percent. The refinancing resulted in the cost savings of just under four-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars over the course of the next six years. Next slide, please. Our capital reserve fund established by the voters in May of two thousand seventeen will again be the financial vehicle we use to fund capital projects for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. As a reminder, the voters approved the capital reserve not to exceed twelve million dollars in total funding for a period not to exceed ten years. Reserve has two significant benefits to taxpayers. It provides a source of funding for building and facility improvements without the need to further raise taxes and it eliminates the interest expense on money that would otherwise have been borrowed. To date, we have fully funded the reserve to the maximum of twelve million dollars. And of that twelve million dollars, approximately eight million will have been spent by the end of the summer of two thousand twenty-one. The next group of projects under consideration are scheduled to begin in the summer of two thousand twenty-one and they include new bleachers, lighting and air conditioning and other renovations in the gymnasium of the high school and upgrades to the high school's bleacher and concession stand at the turf field. Next slide, please. Here is the line-by-line cost estimate for the entirety of the debt service section of the budget. As the bonds issued in support of the two thousand and six capital authorization continue to be paid down, we can expect costs to remain constant for the next five years and then dramatically decline. Again, the savings of over seventy-four, seventy thousand dollars next year is due to the refinancing of part of the outstanding debt. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Next, we'll discuss transportation. Next slide, please. The Yorktown Central School District employs a four tier bus system. That is to say, we have four distinct cycles to our daily runs. In the mornings, the high school students are transported first, then the middle school students, Crumpon School, and last. The two K to three schools, Brookside and Longhans. In the afternoons for dismissal dismissal, the cycle takes the same cycle takes place. The four tier cycle takes just over three hours to complete. We utilize over seventy vehicles of varying sizes to provide the service in two thousand twenty one, twenty two. The district provides home to school transportation to private schools for Yorktown Central School District residents. Within the distance requirements established by the state education department. We also provide transportation services to students attending special education programs outside of the school district boundaries. Our buses travel more than half a million miles each year, consuming more than fifty thousand gallons of fuel. Our former bus provider, Bowman and Sons Incorporated, closed its doors in August of two thousand twenty. Our current provider, MAT Bus, also known as Total Transportation, is under contract until the end of the two thousand twenty three, twenty four school year. Total transportation has steadily replaced many of the oldest buses in the fleet throughout the current school year. The new buses come to us directly from the manufacturer with no prior miles on them. Next slide. We expect total transportation costs to increase by just over five hundred twenty thousand dollars. Of this total increase, approximately one hundred thirty thousand dollars is related to the contractual increase at estimated CPI. Another one hundred sixty thousand of their increase reflects the the placement of two contingency buses in the budget. Our rate of contracted increase for two thousand twenty one, twenty two is based on either the rate of inflation or four percent, whichever is lower. We are estimating a two percent increase to CPI as the escalation factor for the next school year. And the next but the next slide, please. So that completes the third presentation. This is a calendar of all the remaining presentations over the course of the next several weeks. We'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Sorry, I was unmuted. Thank you, Tom. Anthony?
I'm good.
Pete?
Just one question. Tom, with regards to transportation. There was a lot of dialogue with with the new transportation company at earlier meetings. How have they performed this year?
We're really pleased with their performance right now. They have a there was some growing pains early on as they took over a contract so close to the beginning. Of the school year, but I have to say they're just a joy to work with. I think Dr. Hatter.
Yeah.
Experiences.
I'll echo that. They have really improved since that first month. And I remember the night that they came to the board meeting. They came to the board meeting on a Monday. We saw a turnaround within the week from when they met with the board. So it was within a week. It was amazing. I don't know if it was just timing that worked out. Just so you're aware, at four ten in the morning, they're now driving the roads with me separately in separate vehicles. But we are both. We have a transportation provider out on the roads, and they're doing this for us as a service, and it has such value to us in the snow decisions. So they have been just absolutely wonderful and and no complaints out of me.
Thank you.
Freshly?
I'm good. Thank you.
Cheryl?
I'm good. Thank you.
Lisa?
So Tom, I just wanted to say thank you. That refinancing of that debt seems to be a huge, huge savings and. That's really to you and your team, and it seems to be a huge plus to our district and and our community. So thank you for that. That's to you and your genius. So thanks. And I and I do have a question about our transportation. And it's probably one you can't answer right now. And that's what is the. Expected impact of state aid to our budget with respect to the transportation in light of COVID? Do we have any idea of how we're going to be impacted?
Well, we do know that the governor's current proposal, and we'll be discussing this at the presentation on the twenty second of February. His current proposal for state aid eliminates the current structure for transportation aid. And it decouples the expenditures to the amount of aid that a district will receive. Which is not good news for school districts, frankly. It it combines several layers of. Different aid categories into one, and then it makes it very easy to cut, quite frankly, going forward. We took. We stopped in two thousand nineteen when COVID first impacted us. We stopped paying our transportation costs. Saving about two million dollars. We then used that two million dollars in the subsequent year to reduce taxes. To lighten the burden on taxpayers, as you know. So our state aid was reduced in the current two thousand twenty, twenty one school year because our expenditures were lower. Next year, in twenty one, twenty two, transportation aid should return to the pre-COVID levels. And that does help us. But moving forward from there, if the budgets, the governor's proposed budget is adopted. That will be problematic for us.
Okay, I guess we'll talk about it on the twenty second.
Mike?
Yeah, thanks, Tom. Question regarding the maturation of our bonds. You showed the graphic wherein, I guess it's in three years from now. They start to roll off and the the debt service drops. What what exactly does that look like in terms of savings? And is it just a straight reduction that we're no longer paying? What does that do for our budget?
Well, certainly, it is a dollar for dollar savings in the budget. There are some. Anomalies, if you will, with regard to the tax cap calculation. But it it is a dollar for dollar savings in the budget. So I believe in the first year. There's over a million dollars worth of savings when the first piece of the debt matures. In three within three years. And then after that, another million dollars, and then about seven hundred fifty thousand, if memory serves. So it will produce some wiggle room within the budget. So that if we do have to undertake some additional construction projects, as we were just talking about. To accommodate increased enrollment, even if it is from new developments. We would possibly have the ability to absorb that. Into the budget as the old debt matures. So that is probably something that we'll need to fix our sights on as we move forward.
Agreed. Can I ask another question, Jackie? Just as it relates to the capital reserve.
Sure. That's okay.
Sorry. So in relation to, you know, our ability to save significant dollars with refinancing our bonds. Do you have any estimate on what we've been able to save the taxpayers by utilizing the capital reserve fund? For the last twelve million dollars in spending?
Sure. So. The the money that if we had to borrow that twelve million dollars, we would have repaid it over a fifteen year period. And even at a, if you assumed an average low interest rate of one and a half percent. We would have saved one point four million dollars over that fifteen year period. So it's it's a substantial amount of money.
Okay. Um, so that's good. We're good. So the next presentation, right?
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. Tom was actually my first. I was wrong. Tom was my first text at four twelve this morning. And for those, we still have over a hundred people on this call. You're going to get some information. Tom, I'll call you or we'll talk tomorrow at four fifteen because I'm seeing snow in the forecast.
Yes, I'm just wondering whether it's worth even leaving the office this evening.
I was just thinking the same. Thank you, Jackie. That concludes our presentations for this evening. I thank you. I thank you, and I thank the board.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right, we're going to go to board action items and other things. Okay. Um. Be resolved that the board hereby authorizes student participation in the following higher risk sports. Subject to adherence, strict adherence to the guidelines and protocols. Established by the state and local health authorities, as well as the rules of section one of the New York State Public High School Athletic Association. Ball one is varsity and junior varsity cheerleading. Varsity junior varsity boys and girls basketball. Varsity and junior varsity wrestling, varsity ice hockey, and freshman boys basketball. Ball two is varsity and junior varsity football and varsity and junior varsity volleyball. Spring is varsity, junior varsity, and freshman boys and girls lacrosse. Yet further resolved that the board hereby directs the superintendent to arrange for COVID nineteen testing of student athletes and coaches. As a condition of participation in the above referenced sports.
So moved.
I I Jack had one question. If the sport's not on here, does that mean it's not high risk and will go on as scheduled?
Correct. These are only what the state has deemed to be a high risk sport. So there are different classifications of sports. So these are in the state's designation of of high risk.
So like baseball, softball would go on.
Those are, yeah, those don't require a separate Board of Education approval.
Thank you.
Okay, I just. Um, well, still in the discussion period, I just want to be very clear. That the reason for this motion tonight is because this is what the DOH guidelines are now telling us. This is not. We're we're following DOH guidelines based upon. What they've set. It's not. We're not choosing students in a classroom over students on a sports field. It's the choice. It is the rules for the DOH. I don't want to make it any clearer than that. I don't know how to say it clearer than that.
And Jack and Jackie, we follow the Department of Health guidelines from.
Day one.
Onset of this, correct?
Day one, every guideline.
We have done, right, Ron?
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely.
Anybody else? So a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Policy. We have a second read and adoption for the following policies. Eighty three forty vehicle use and driver safety. Eighty four thirteen transportation of non-public school students. Eighty four fourteen point five alcohol and drug testing. Of safety sensitive employees program and eighty four seventeen student transportation in private vehicles. Everybody okay with the second read?
Yep.
Can I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Personnel, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved under certified personnel. We have some appointments. Full time temporary appointments, regular substitute appointments, teaching stipends. A couple of corrections, a resignation of a CTA and a classified personnel. We have a removal from our substitute list.
So moved.
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Business office, a motion to approve the cooperative transportation agreement with the following school districts, Croton, Garrison, Hendrick Hudson. Lakeland, Austin, Peak Skill, Putt Valley, Somers, and Yorktown. There is no increase to the budget for this.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Health and welfare, a motion to approve the following contract for health and welfare services provided to resident pupils attending non-public schools and other districts for the twenty twenty one school year. And this is for White Plains Central City School District.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Budget transfers, a motion to approve the budget transfers that are listed below.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Special ed, a motion to approve the following placements as of February eighth, two thousand and twenty one.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A release and settlement be resolved at the Board of Education that's hereby authorized. Approve the settlement. And release agreement concerning student number one, three, two, five, two. Be it further resolved that the superintendent of schools will provide authorized execution settlement and release agreement on behalf of the district.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're up to public comment on non-agenda related items. Of that.
I'm sorry, did you hear? I we I didn't receive any. Sorry.
Thank you very much. And we're up to board comment. Anthony?
I am good.
Cheryl?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Lisa?
Nothing. Thank you.
Pete?
I'm good.
Freshly?
I'm good. Thank you.
Mike?
Nope, I'm good.
All right, again, me, I just want to thank the administration for their hard work, and I know that, you know. It feels like there's tough choices, and we're just following with the rules that are laid out ahead of us. But I appreciate all of your efforts, Dr. Hatter. I know you start really early in the morning and go really late and. Again, we're just really so appreciative of the leadership of of you, Lisa, Tom, and all of the administrators in the district. So we thank you very much. Lisa, Ron, Tom, anything? No, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Good night, everybody.
Night, everyone.
Everyone.